I'm still negative, but my 20-month-old and my husband are both sick, so.
Okay, we're about to start. It's a long minute. Right? Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting, Wednesday, July 11th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it is. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please, Allison.
Counselor Novak. Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Kopczynski.
Here.
Counselor Madigou.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here. Next on the agenda, and to get her feet wet, starting out the new year, Dr. McGee, Counselor McGee, Dr. Martin Luther King, present my proclamation.
Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., born on January 15th, 1929, devoted his life to justice and equity for all people of all races and economic standing through nonviolent means, and whereas this led to the establishment of many federal and local laws prohibiting discrimination and fostering human rights, and whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service, and whereas since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired to serve their neighbor, their neighbors and communities by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Dr. Martin Luther King, Dr. King stated in his speech, "I say to you today, my friends, though, even though we face difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out its true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal." And whereas Dr. King once said, "Life most persistent and urgent's question, what are you doing for others?" Leading communities across the country to answer the que, that question by coming together to honor Dr. King by helping their neighbors and communities through thousands of service projects.
Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim January 16th, 2023, Martin Luther King, Martin Luther King Jr., and call upon all our citizens and comment to commemorate the day and encourage citizens to be of service to someone, a church or community agency, that serves others in order to, in order to reflect Dr. King's legacy. And witness whereof, I here to set my hand and to cause the seal of Albany, the City of Albany, to be affixed this 11th date of January 2023, Alexander D. Johnson, the second mayor. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a special presentation swearing in of firefighters and recognition of promotions. Fire Chief Shane Wooton is doing the honors.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and a lot of community members and family members. I'm Shane Wooton. I'm Fire Chief of the Albany Fire Department, and if we haven't met, it's nice to meet you. So, before we get started here, I'd like to describe what these four candidates went through to get in front of all of you to be pinned tonight, which is what we call when they receive their badge, as well as to take the oath of being a firefighter with the Albany Fire Department. They all have gone through a competitive hiring process where they had to take a, this video exam where they are put in different theoretical situations and they have to navigate those. Then they also have to pass a physical agility test that is a national standard for firefighters. And then they go through an interview process. We test their skills, and then we finally offer them a position, a conditional position with the department. Once they have the conditional position, I mean, they're only halfway. Then at that point, they have to go through an extensive background. Then, now if they pass the background, they get to spend a day with a psychiatrist to make sure that they're capable to handle some of the stresses that come with the job. And then they also meet with the medical doctor to make sure that they're physically fit enough to do the job. And then at that point, we hire them. We put them through an academy, which is extensive training. And then now, as I affectionately say, when I talk to them, they've been released to the wild, and they are with their field training officers, their lieutenants, and they're doing their best. Some of them are in the back, teaching them how to do the job and how to do it safely. So they've gone through a lot to get here in front of all of you. So, if I could, just have you please come up, and we'll get this started. Right there for now, let me say a couple things. Okay, so what I'm going to go through right now is basically kind of some of my parting words to the four new recruits as they start their career. And I'll introduce them as, as we get going. So, today, this afternoon, I sat down, I wanted to throw down some thoughts, and if any of you ever heard me talk before, anytime I write a speech, I always think about kind of what I'm feeling at the moment when I'm going to be presenting something to somebody. So, here are my feelings from this afternoon. Becoming a firefighter is one of the most noble professions you can enter. From the very start of life to the very end of life, you are there to help people on likely their worst day, a day they didn't imagine could or would happen. You are here to serve others. Please don't forget that. Whether that be to crawl into a burning building you have never been in before to rescue someone from peril, or to provide advanced medical care and treatment for those who are ill, or simply just to provide comfort and a hand for someone to hold on to. You must always remember, you are here not for yourself, but for, and your own ambitions, but for others. The oath you will be taking after receiving your badge is not just a few meaningless words in a department ritual. It's not a procedural checkbox that we have to check. The words in this oath should never be taken lightly. They are your promise and your commitment to integrity, honor, service, and trust. So when you raise your right hand in front of your family, friends, coworkers, and the community that puts its trust in you, know the words you promise are a solemn commitment to all those who stand before you. Do not let them down. So I will ask, one at a time, for you to call up a friend, family, to come up and to pin you, and then I'd ask that they go sit down afterwards, but you please remain up here so we can do the oath right after. And Mayor Alex Johnson II is going to be helping me. I'll give him the badge to present to your family member, and then they can come up and pin you. All right, our first person here is, Ashley, or Ashley, oh my gosh, Ashley Saffa. Please, right here. Oh, no, 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 actually, family member, Ashley. So I was doing so well talking and presenting, and then I got in my own head, and here we are. So, Ashley, who's going to be presenting, pinning you tonight?
So this is my mom, Nancy. She's the best woman I know.
All right, thank you, Nancy. Perfect, thank you. Firefighter Jordan Humphries, who's going to be pinning you?
My wife, Madison.
Firefighter Knighton Tomaz.
Alyssa, this is my wife.
And firefighter Parker Romvo.
My girlfriend, Natalie.
Okay, I'm going to try to do this one-handed here. All right, so if you would please raise your right hand, I state your name.
Aye.
From this day forward, do openly pledge and freely declare that I will faithfully serve and fulfill my duties as a professional firefighter of the Albany Fire Department, and the citizens of Albany, our surrounding communities, and the state of Oregon. I promise to honor and respect our mission, to prevent, protect from harm, the citizens of Albany, and my coworkers, and to fulfill to the best of my abilities our vision and value statements, to hold oneself to the highest level of honesty, integrity, dedication, and human dignity. I recognize the strength of the badge as a symbol of public faith and trust in me and my actions, both on and off the job. I promise to stay physically and mentally fit and prepare to do my job to the best of my ability and will be true to the ethics of the fire service, and I make these promises freely and upon my own. Congratulations.
I just wanted to let you all know that we're honored to have you serve the City of Albany, but the three gentlemen, I've known them for years, just didn't know their names because they had a football helmet on. So refereeing your games at South Island High School is a joy for me, but I'm happy to see that local families, local young men and women are here to serve the City of Albany. Congratulations on your appointments, all of you, and I'm looking forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
I promised Mr. Mayor that the families that have to stay for the council meeting, is that okay?
That's okay. But, but what if they want to? Wait till everybody clears out. Thank you, chief. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing supplemental budget by Director Gina Jaeger, Finance Director. Pages 4, 311 on your packet, and at this time, no one has signed up to speak during the, during the public hearing. Next on tonight's agenda, we talked about that, directions on how to testify and submit written materials were published on the council agenda. I declare this public hearing open at 6:14 PM. Does the staff have a report?
I do. Tonight, I'm bringing forward a supplemental budget. For some of you who are new to this, we have a budget process that we go through every two years. We adopt the budget generally in the May-June timeframe. If there are changes that need to occur to the budget after that, then we do that through a supplemental budget. There are some, there are some appropriations that we can make through a resolution, but generally, those have to be very specific. For example, if we receive a grant for a fire truck, then we can do that through an appropriations resolution. However, however, if something could be used more generally, like for general government, then it really needs to come through a supplemental budget. The reason we have a public hearing tonight is because one of the funds that we are changing had changes in expenditures that were more than 10%. Even though the appropriations were only 7%, if you take the budget, Oregon law, local budget law class that will come up, transfers and contingencies are not included in, as expenditures, but they are included in appropriations. So tonight, most of these items are, are actually items that have already been discussed. You'll see some that have resolutions listed after them. Those were done through appropriations resolutions. However, we're just formalizing them. One of them, for example, had, was $15,713. We don't budget that way. We always budget to the nearest hundred. Otherwise, that budget document is going to look awfully messy. So, again, most of these have been things that we have discussed. As I call out in our, in the staff memo, in the general fund and in the central services fund, we're moving monies from contingency. We didn't foresee a 9% COLA happening, or a 9% CPI happening, and so we're using funds from contingency to help make up some of those, that COLA. We are also, in the grants fund, we received many different grants. One of those was $143,000 in opioid, opioid settlement funds. We're currently using those monies for medical supplies like Narcan. We're using it for overtime, for education, and presentations by the public safety departments. We're also using it for some of the peer support for them. So, right now, that's how we're allocating those. Lynn County also wants to get together and discuss maybe some of the uses of those funds. We had other grants that came. There's money that we're going to be decreasing. ARPA grants, $52,000, we're doing a transfer into the city's mayor and council program, which will help with some of the audio problems that we're having here in council chambers. Economic development, we have monies in the economic development program that we had additional revenues available, and so we are, as discussed at the November meeting, we're going to go ahead and increase those appropriations so that we can increase some payments to outside agencies as well as transfers to the Parks Department for the Waverly Lake cleanup and the stage four summer programming. And then really, with streets, we received $350,000 in COVID relief funding for the Queen Avenue Rehabilitation Project, so the Crossing Project, not the project crossing that I have in the memo. I am happy to ask, entertain any questions, if anybody has any right now. Honestly, this is a pretty, everything has been discussed previously, and so it's just formalizing those appropriations.
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Novak? You're muted. You're muted. No, go ahead. I cannot hear you. I think your mic is disconnected or something. If you're dialed, are you dialed in? So you might, so we want to go to the link? So talking, explain it to her on the mic. I'm talking to an insurance guy.
Hi, Counselor Novak, it's Kinsey. It sounds like you're in, dialed through your phone number, but you're also tuned in on your phone app, so I think you need to hang up that phone call and then maybe switch your phone app to, maybe, maybe it'll just work if. We might get her back in a moment. We'll see.
So we'll hold until she gets, any other counselor have any questions while we're waiting on Counselor Novak? Counselor, Counselor Newton, do you have anything?
I do not, but thank you for asking.
So we'll give her a few minutes to log back in, and they're already at work. So while we're waiting for Counselor Novak, oh, she is.
Hi.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My apologies, everyone. I apparently need to bring my laptop into our tech experts tomorrow, and I guarantee you I will do that. My question is, it's from my appointee to the TLT Committee, and what we need to know is, first of all, is the line item economic development activities under this supplemental now subject to the new policy and procurement rules? That's the first question. And then the second question is, if the supplemental does pass, when will the TLT Committee meet to address the collaborative tourism piece since time is of the essence?
I really can't address those questions. I mean, those are really for a different time. The economic development activities that is listed in the supplemental budget is for those allocations to those outside agencies. Those are what those, that's what those increases are.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Sophie.
Hi, to your CTP grant question, we anticipated that council might appropriate those funds, so at their last meeting, we made a plan for this so that they wouldn't have to meet again. I'm going to reach out, assuming you approve this, I'll reach out to those recipients and get them their money.
Okay, first of all, again, is the line item economic development activities under this supplemental now subject to the new policy and procurement rules?
No, we're actually going to, we'll, we'll bring back contracts for these agencies because they had requested those, and council approved those. We will bring back contract amendments for them to council at a later date. We just needed to have the money first before we could actually write it into a contract.
I, I do understand that. I, I, I'm still, forgive me, but I, I'm not clear on why I'm not getting an answer with regard to whether the, the economic development activities under this current supplemental that we're discussing right now is subject to the new policy and procurement rules. That seems like something we ought to be able to answer.
I'm sorry, I thought I did answer that. So the, what we're going to do is we're going to do a contract amendment. So we currently have contracts with these different outside agencies. We will do contract amendments for the amounts that they requested, and we will bring those back to council for approval.
Okay, I understand, I do understand that. I understand for those outside agencies. What I'm not hearing is the answer to whether or not the line item economic development activities in this supplemental is now subject to the new policy and procurement that those outside agencies are subject to. Is economic development activities likewise subject to the new policy and procurement rules?
They will be in the future, but for right now, we're just doing a contract amendment to the current contracts.
Thank you. Thank you for finally giving me what I needed to hear for that constituent. And then, I guess you said the other part is something that we cover later as to when the TLT Committee would meet to address the collaborative tourism piece?
Well, so Sophie just addressed that. So she said that the, the Tourism Advisory Committee, in anticipation of it being approved, had already decided how they would spend those tourism dollars, the CTP dollars, and they would reach out to the recipients if this supplemental budget were approved.
Thank you.
And any other, thank you, Counselor Novak. Any other counselor have questions for Director Jaeger? Okay. No one was registered to speak. No comments were submitted. Does anyone in the audience who didn't sign up to speak, sign up to speak, wish to speak at this time? So hearing none. I declare this public hearing closed at 6:25 PM. Counsel discussion? Counsel, Counselor Kopczynski?
I move, we approve the resolution adopting a supplemental budget for biennium 2021, 2023.
A motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Your second. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. You don't, you don't need a roll call, do you, Allison? Okay, thank you. Next is business from the public. No written materials have been submitted, and no one signed up to speak, virtually, signed up to speak virtually? After all, audience, anybody in the audience, audience would like to speak from the public? You have one? Oh, Lisa Grotto signed up, I'm sorry. I had the wrong sheet. And we have one person sign up. That's Director Grotto.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa Grotto, Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association. I just wanted to give you a quick downtown update. First, before I forget, a thank you to the City of Albany for the support with the community tree. Sad to say, it has been retired for the year, although the snowflakes will remain up for another couple of weeks, and the street tree lights, the wrapped around the little trees, will continue until daylight savings time, and so in the spring. So we will still have some, some fun downtown for a bit. Also, I wanted to mention that the revitalization grant opportunity has returned for 2023. This, if you may remember, we were awarded a grant of $200,000 last year for the Oregon Electric Railway Station project for revitalization and relocation of Ciberus into the building, and that grant is in process. Our pre-application process to select the champion that we will take forward to compete statewide, those applications are due to us by January 22nd. We'll, the committee will make a decision by February 6th, and then the real work begins to competitive and win statewide. So, keep you informed as that goes. Some other things going on downtown, Gallery Kalapua, Big Show of Little Art is a call to artists. Entries are due Sunday, January 22nd. Anyone may enter, young, old, professional, or first-time artist. The reception where those will be displayed is on February 3rd, on first Friday. We also had a feature this month of downtown winter ideas from visiting the Pix Theater to maybe getting some new plants at Urban Ag, dropping into Surefire to paint something fun, or maybe some Vietnamese comfort food at Boss. So some fun mix of things. Upcoming events, we, also, the Albany Civic Theater has Silent Sky, a play coming up on February 10th. And beyond that, our newsletter highlights beautiful entries from the Twice Around Parade, and congratulations again to Powering the Spirit of Christmas, which was the entry by Pacific Power. The final article this month is downtown salons and studios offer pampering for the new year. So I invite you all to treat yourself to something and come downtown. So, that's what I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Director.
I have copies of the newsletter available after the event.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in our, our audience or attending virtually that didn't sign up, would like to speak to the council? Seeing none. Next on the agenda is adoption of the consent calendar. Counsel, I personally have one thing to discuss. Item 7E, excuse me, item 7E, number one. Anybody have anything else?
Move to approve the adoption of the consent calendar with the exception of item 7E.
One. We have a motion and a?
Second.
Second, should we discuss that? We should discuss it first, right? So the reason I'm asking to talk about this particularly one is that I was under the impression that the judge was going to come and talk with us about the court. Is that next time?
Now, this is the renewal of his contract, Mr. Mayor. He is scheduled to come and give you a state-of-the-court presentation on Monday, February 6th. However, if that's the only presentation that evening, which at this point it is, it'll happen Wednesday, February 8th.
Okay.
And we'll give you another Monday off then, if that happens.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go with the explanation.
Alex?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. You have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the item pulled. So you need to have?
And put it back on.
Yes, you need to put it back on and make the motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
Okay, so I'm going to put it back, do I have to make a motion to put it back on?
Let's just call it red, yes.
Okay, I'm going to put it back on, so we have a motion and a second for the full.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you. Next on the agenda, we're almost done, is staff reports, number eight, final ADA self-evaluation and transition plan for accessible, accessibility in the public right-of-way. Engineer Stacy Bel Castro?
Let's see. Actually, I think I'm going to move this here. Okay, am I coming, coming through clearly? All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. For those that, that have never, I've never met before, my name is Stacy Bel Castro. I work in the Engineering Division of Public Works, and my position in the department is city engineer. Tonight, I'm here along with Heather Butzick. Heather works for the consultant MIG, and we're going to be providing an update on the Public Works project to complete a self-evaluation and transition plan for accessibility in the right-of-way. Let me go ahead and share my screen at this point.
Is she virtually?
Yeah, Heather is attending virtually, and she'll be turning her screen on when, when her turn comes to present the slides. All right, there we go. Yeah, it'll. Oh.
Councilor Novak, please mute.
My apologies.
All right, thanks, everybody, for your patience.
No worries.
Okay, I do want to point out the presentation is being provided for information tonight. We're not going to be asking that council take any specific action. The project was initiated two years ago to meet the requirements of Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which I'm going to refer to as ADA. Title II of the ADA requires that entities that have 50 or more employees, they must first complete an evaluation of all of the programs, services, and facilities that are used by the public. And then, second, they must develop a transition plan to address all the accessibility barriers that are identified during the evaluation. The Public Works project is focused specifically on the right-of-way. However, Title II does not apply just to the right-of-way. It applies to any city program, park, these council chambers, the city's website, anything that is used by the public. Recognizing this, a year ago, council expanded the project with MIG to include an update to the citywide self-evaluation and transition plan. Library Director Eric Eichenoi is managing the project, and we expect that it'll be completed this summer. The Public Works project is, is further along than the citywide plan. I do want to, like, pause and note here that we are addressing this specific requirement of Title II, but since the ADA law was adopted in 1990, Public Works has been developing and address standards and address ADA. This project is specific to updating the transition plan that's used as a roadmap to, to address accessibility in the right-of-way. It's important that the city has an up-to-date transition plan. Should the city be subject to a Title II lawsuit, it's one of the first documents that's going to be requested. And it also demonstrates that Public Works is committed to addressing accessibility. All right, so at this point, I'm going to now let Heather with MIG introduce herself. Heather's going to provide information on the slides that I provided council at the beginning of the week. In her presentation, she'll be providing an overview of the ADA law specific to Title II, and then discussing how the evaluation was done and the required elements of the transition plan. And I see Heather on the screen now.
Stacy, did you want me to share my screen before I started talking, or are you going to advance through the slides?
Why don't I just advance through the, through the slides? I can, I can, I think, follow along.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm Heather Butzick with MIG. And as Stacy had mentioned, we've been assisting the city in its development of the Americans with Disabilities Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. I have a brief presentation regarding the city's obligations under the ADA and the current status of the Public Works project. To start, the ADA was enacted over 30 years ago, and it is a civil rights law that supports the right of people with disabilities to participate in the programs, activities, and services provided by the public, private, and nonprofit agencies. Now, this law provides all people with and without a disability the right to participate in all aspects of life. This could be taking a recreation class, voting, serving on a jury, and even crossing the street. The ADA is comprised of five titles, and the focus of our project is legislated under Title II, which addresses public agencies and the programs, activities, and services that they provide. Next slide. Now, Title II agencies are required to ensure that all programs and services are accessible and usable by all. Now, in order to meet this obligation, the city is required to develop a self-evaluation and transition plan to identify to the public the person who is designated as responsible for overseeing Title II compliance, often referred to as the ADA coordinator, and to provide notice and develop and make public an ADA grievance and complaint procedure. Then they have to implement the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan and document the progress, and involve members of the disabilities community in the process. Next slide. The ADA legislation defines the requirements for a self-evaluation and transition plan. Now, for the self-evaluation, you have to evaluate city services, policies, and practices, and identify modifications needed if any potentially discriminatory practices are identified. For the transition plan, you have to inventory the barriers, identify feasible solutions for removal of the barriers, establish a timeline for their removal, and identify the person responsible for Title II compliance. And for both, again, involving people with disabilities in the planning process. So the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan project addresses these requirements through five key phases. The first phase is engaging the public, in particular those with disabilities, and keeping them informed throughout the project. The second is evaluating the city's programs, policies, and activities for potentially discriminatory practices. The third is assessing and documenting existing conditions for physical barriers. The fourth is establishing priorities and action plans to formulate a schedule and implementation strategy. And the fifth is to produce a usable document that meets the ADA requirements. Nothing about us without us is the focus of public engagement. The ADA does not require the participation of the general public, but rather involvement of people with disabilities or those representing those with disabilities in both the self-evaluation process and transition plan development. Next slide. For this project, we formed an ADA advisory stakeholder group and an online project information portal specifically addressing the city's ADA efforts. Now, the stakeholder group has been involved at each of the project milestones and has contributed to the development. And there were three meetings in total. The first meeting provided an overview of the project and a discussion of the components required to complete an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan, similar to the discussion we're having with you tonight. We also discussed the needs, challenges, and opportunities with the stakeholders to identify what's working well and what could be done better. At the second meeting, we reviewed the results of the self-evaluation, which looked at engineering standards, specifications, policies, as well as facilities in the right-of-way. We collected feedback from the stakeholder group on how to prioritize and address the barriers that were identified in the draft plan. And at the third and final meeting, we reviewed the draft plan and received comments. Now, the draft plan was revised to incorporate these comments, and following this meeting, it was posted for public review and comment. So the next phase is to evaluate programs, policies, activities, and identify the needed modifications. We completed a comprehensive review of the city's policies and services as they pertain to the right-of-way to identify any practices that may have been discriminatory. At the same time, we met with staff representing major program and service areas within Public Works and administered an online staff questionnaire. Next slide. Now, the questionnaire addressed city practices identified within the ADA, such as customer service, public meetings, special events, emergency evacuation procedures, and communications. The review also included an evaluation of the city's standards and specifications. Now, for all the findings, we made recommendations for corrective actions to take in order to provide services that are consistent with the ADA's requirements, as well as best practices in the absence of adopted standards. Now, all of the information has been incorporated into the self-evaluation section of the draft plan. Now, the self-evaluation includes the outcomes of the analysis with recommendations, and is organized by the applicable Title II regulations, with each section identifying the findings of the assessment, specifying the required actions that need to be taken, followed by supporting implementation strategies. To meet the requirements for the transition plan, a physical assessment of city facilities in the right-of-way was conducted, and the assessment process for buildings and parks is currently underway. For the right-of-way evaluations, we assessed curb ramps, sidewalks, crosswalks, rail crossings, pedestrian push buttons, pedestrian crossing times, transit stops, and on-street parking. And at the end of the assessment process for the public right-of-way, we produced a right-of-way barrier summary report of the findings for all the facilities organized by the priorities required within the ADA legislation, and discussed with staff and the advisory group participants. This is also included in the transition plan chapter of the plan. A similar approach will be used for the citywide elements. And once we concluded the self-evaluation and transition plan assessments, we began the process of applying the priorities and establishing the timeline for removing barriers. We met with the advisory group and city staff work groups to develop and refine priorities that inform the barrier mitigation schedule. Now, it's expected over time shifting program priorities, funding facility improvements, and other factors will influence the prioritization and scheduling of access improvements. And the resulting plan will be dynamic. We've also provided the city with ADA implementation data that is intended to become the city's living transition plan tool and barrier mitigation tracking tool. And the last phase of the project is producing the comprehensive self-evaluation and transition plan. A public review draft was produced following the third stakeholder meeting and includes the self-evaluation and transition plan requirements, including the methodologies used, identification of the ADA coordinator, and the city's ADA notice and grievance procedures. The plan was posted for public review on October 28th and remained available for comments throughout the month of November. And posts regarding the draft plan were reviewed over 3,500 times. An online questionnaire was posted with the draft plan and was completed by 12 individuals. Now, the responses from that questionnaire selected curb ramps, sidewalks, and crosswalks as the three highest facility priorities. And the final document will be prepared following this council session. And then, at this point, I'll hand things back over to Stacy.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
All right, so as Heather mentioned, the right-of-way transition plan will be finalized following this meeting and will be incorporating some edits and comments that we've received. The ADA doesn't prescribe a timeline to address the barriers that were identified in the valuation. We did set a 15-year planning window for, that's our target for removing barriers. This is with the understanding that we're going to be receiving direction from council, from policymakers. That target can change based on funding that we have available. It may change based on complaints or requests that, that we receive from citizens, but we did want to set a target to show that we're going to be making meaningful progress. We have made some changes in the short term following completion of the evaluation. Our standards and specifications have been updated to incorporate the recommendations that the evaluation identified. We are going to be working with ODOT and our transportation staff to address the timing issue on some of the, the crossing signals that was identified. We're going to, something that we have been doing for some time is we evaluate accessibility as part of all of our street projects. We've been able to make significant improvements, ADA improvements, using this approach. An example, we had a, had a streetscape downtown corridor project that took place about four years. And as part of that project, we replaced over 130 ramps to comply with ADA. And the final thing we're going to do is, during the upcoming budget cycle, we're going to be proposing the creation of an accessibility program. We've reviewed the, the current funding and reserves, and we believe we can fund this program at approximately $150,000 per. approximately $150,000 per fiscal year. In this way, we will be able to start making some significant process towards removing the barriers that were identified in the evaluation. Before I conclude and open it up to council questions or comments, I do want to take time to recognize the stakeholders that participate in the project. We had seven individuals that spent a lot of time. They participated in three meetings, and then we gave them a lot of documents prior to the meeting that they had to review to prepare. They were all so responsive and were willing to participate and share their personal experience, and it just made this that much better of a project. And with that, I open it up to questions or comments that Heather and I could answer if you have any.
Thank you, Stacy and Heather. Now, council, any questions?
Yes, I think I heard near the end of the presentation that there was a total of 12 people that actually contributed comments to this whole process, and people say that you can't make a, you don't get results if you don't participate. Well, this just shows even a small number of people can make a huge difference on some of the outcomes, which I think is good. It's too bad there couldn't have been more, be that as it may, that we got that many, I guess, is a good thing.
Yep.
Another councillor? Councillor Smith?
We're in the process of installing new bus stops all over town to accommodate the changes with ATS, and those are, would be good examples of how we've adapted standards to the current requirements and to make sure that those are accessible, because public transit is an important part of getting people around who don't have other ways of getting there.
Yes.
I did have a question for you. Anything, Councillor Montague? I have a question. So all new developments must meet the standard, correct?
Yes.
So that's, wanted to worry about that going forward?
Yep.
That's all I have. That's great. Councillor Newton, Councillor Novak?
Yeah, I had a question if there was a plan to, so I live in downtown Ward 1, and I know that a lot of our sidewalks, they do not have any curbs. And then you mentioned that you ordered to replace several hundred. Is there a plan to replace any of the residential curbs that would be more accessible in established neighborhoods?
There actually, we are, we do have a street improvement project on Washington Street that's going to be constructed this summer, and as part of that, we are going to, gosh, I think there's 20 curb ramps that we will be replacing. The interesting thing about that project is we did receive a specific complaint from a citizen to help make that corridor more accessible. As far as addressing accessibility in the neighborhoods, it'll, you know, we are going to try to tackle addressing accessibility throughout the city based on feedback from the stakeholders. You know, we will focus more on ramps that people need to use to access public buildings, schools, hospitals, the downtown area. I mean, those will probably happen first.
That's good to know. Across the street, so I live a few blocks from that hospital, and just in the last few months, I've had two folks with accessibility issues trip and fall just across the street from me, and one of them had quite a bloody gash and had to go back to the hospital. So that's why I brought that up. But thank you.
I'm sorry to hear that. I'll reach out and get the specific location. That's something that we can note as an incident that happened, and it'll elevate the improvements in that area.
Excellent.
Thank you. Councillor Novak?
Thank you. I believe that one of my constituents with whom I've had multiple very worthwhile conversations over the last few years, I can't think of his last name right now, but his first name is Jeffrey, and I'm pretty sure he served on the stakeholder group. I know that over the last two years, he's pointed out to the city various areas where we're in violation with ADA, and I'm wondering if the input that he's given has been taken into account. That's my question, because he brought a lot of things to my attention, which we've brought to the attention of others, and I'm just wanting to know if the input that he's given has been considered.
Yes. See Jeffrey Evans, he participated in two of the stakeholders' meetings. He didn't, he was invited to the third one, but he didn't participate.
I relocated to Salem.
Yeah. I have continued to send him information, and I did, gosh, it was probably six months ago, spend an hour with him just going through our downtown, noting some of the, some of his concerns, and we did take note of his input during the stakeholders' meeting.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I have, I'm just happy you're doing it. You know, I'm an insurance guy, and most of, a lot of my clients have mobility devices, walkers, you know, little scooters get around town, so it makes me happy to hear them happy about things that are happening in the city. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
So next up is business from the council, and since you guys, you two ladies are on Zoom, I'll let you go first. So we'll start with councillor, I started with councillor McGee last time. I'll start with councillor Novak, and then go with councillor Newton.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Councillor Newton?
Also, I have nothing.
Thank you. Councillor Montague?
Yes, I have two things. First, I had a constituent email me about a person that is speeding through our neighborhood, and I actually heard them last night about 10:30. I guess this is a reoccurring problem, but I have the email. I think somebody from the police was copied on that, but I'm wondering if we could look into maybe upping patrols around 10, 10:30 is when I think I keep hearing it. So that. And then I had another constituent email me about garbage in our, in the South Albany area, so I was wondering if we could see if there's a plan to have public garbage cans out in that area, if there is a general plan for garbage cans, and if so, can we get an idea of when that area is going to be serviced? I don't know.
Let me, if you could clear that a little bit for me. That's a Republic Services, I believe you're talking about Republic Services service. Is that correct?
No. Do we, does the city own, like, city-owned garbage cans that are for the public to use? The concern is there's a lot of litter in that area in the South Albany area.
Like the cans downtown? Like the cans downtown you're talking about?
Yes.
And those are provided by Republic. In fact, if Lisa's here, she could even comment on how they provide that as a courtesy, just because they recognize that.
This was specifically Jackson Hill area near Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, I don't believe that we have, I don't believe Republic, I can't speak for Republic, but I can tell you that I don't think that they have public cans there. And Lisa, if you have something to add, please do.
The downtown trash cans, to best of my knowledge, are part of the streetscape project, and also because it's a downtown, at one point, it was, went through the Downtown Association as far as the payment, but during COVID, it was moved to the city, and I believe then became a donation or some other kind of, more of a contribution because of the municipality. So Julie Jackson would probably be able to speak to that, or someone else at Republic.
I can give you her phone number.
Okay. Thank you.
Any way that we could help, just let me know.
Yep. That's all I had.
So I have, thank you. Councillor Kopczynski?
Nothing this evening.
Councillor Smith?
Yes, three things.
Mike?
Three things from me tonight. One was I, on the public appearance and nuisance and ADA front, all of those things, I had an email this evening from a constituent who lives in the Deerfield subdivision regarding overgrown vegetation, low-hanging trees, trees that drop stuff on the street on Waverly Drive between Grand Prairie and Del Rio. This is an area, it's a, it's a major thoroughfare, it's a, what's the right, it's an arterial street with subdivisions on both sides that back up to the street. Technically, the sidewalks that are on Waverly should be maintained by the people who have the houses next to them, but the sidewalks are behind their back fences, so they are ignored. Most people don't know that they're responsible for that. We've had street crew, the sheriff's work crew do maintenance along there, and I think we still do during, I'm not sure if they're back in business after COVID. They probably are, but that's a place where it's often maintained by the sheriff's work crew. But the trees that are encroaching are on private property on the homeowner's side of the fence, and it makes it very difficult for people to walk along the sidewalk. Sidewalks are 10 feet wide there, at least on the west side of Waverly. It's a major commuting route for students at South Albany High School, and there are lots of students who walk to school. Major route for neighborhood members walking their dogs and just out for walking in general. But it's a mess, and it's a routine mess. I don't know that there's a simple solution to that other than possibly talking to the, give a hoot.
Giving a hoot.
Yep, and putting that on their regular rotation of nuisance areas to tidy up. And I'll be doing that. But anyway, just wanted to bring that up. The other thing was that I spent a quality hour this morning getting a tour of the old Oregon Electric Railroad Station, now that it's been gutted and its former faded glory has been revealed to sunlight again. That building is stunning inside, and to see what it used to be and what it could be in the future is really exciting. So I enjoyed that. Thank you to Chef Matt Bennett for the tour. And then I wanted to say how, this time of year, when everybody's taking new oaths of office, I'm reminded of the oath that I took two years ago, and it's a good reminder. It's like renewing your marriage vows, sort of reminding yourself of what you promised to do for the people who you represent. And I was reminded again this evening, when the firefighters took their oaths, those were, those are heavy words for young people facing a very demanding career, and to see them stand before us and make those pledges was inspiring. I've always felt like I'm in good hands in Albany with our police officers and our firefighters. They provide very good service. I commented to councillor Montague earlier that one of the firefighters who was sworn in tonight was the recipient of a baby blanket that I made him when he was born. Can't believe he's old enough to be a professional firefighter and a married one at that, but that, just to remind people how important those oaths are, and I take mine seriously, and I expect that everybody else up here does too, and thank you for serving.
Alex, I did have one thing that I forgot to bring up. At some point in the near future, I guess we're going to be discussing the issue of pulling a candidate from out of Ward to into a different commission. Is that coming up on the next work session then, or how, when is that going to be coming up? Because they have the, our appointees have to be done by the end, a couple of them that will be on the end of the month, I guess, the third.
So we approved that a long time ago, and we can't find anybody.
Right, right, but it's taken a while to actually get it on to the agenda. I mean, for, well, it's, we've got it listed two different ways and different, verbally, I think we approved it, but it's, because I've got an appointee from Ward 3, it's going to be my appointee from Ward 2. She lives in Ward 3.
I think, Peter, can you address that?
Yeah, you, you, this evening, you approved CAG appointments on the consent agenda, and they'll be coming back to you again on the 30th, because they haven't all been submitted yet. So there'll be another round of appointments submitted on the 30th.
So we did approve that change.
Right.
Yeah. That was a couple of years ago, when I was a councillor.
But it's, but it's come up again when I tried to appoint, or I am appointing a lady, she's in the audience, to planning commission from Ward 3, okay? She, I'm appointing her for Ward 2. She lives in Ward 3 by a couple of blocks.
Good evening, council. To address the matter, we weren't able to get it on this agenda in time, and because it's an odd duck situation, we are going to have it as not part of the consent agenda for our meeting on the 30th with the other appointments that we're going to finish off. We're going to have it as a separate memo, so that way it can be open for discussion. So then, if you do choose to pass it, it, at that point, will have been discussed, it's on the record, and we can go through with the appointment.
We don't need to change any of our language in our existing processes now to allow for that?
No. Mr. Mayor, the change that you were thinking of several years ago when you were a councillor was to require that those appointments be made within the ward.
But we also stipulated that if we couldn't find anybody, you could appoint from outside the ward.
Well, it, what the language says is that it has to be within the ward. So certainly, the council, the council can approve a deviation from that, and it's just a deviation. It's an exception, it's a one-time exception.
I found it. I found the resolution.
You did?
Yeah.
So what does it say?
It says, "Councillors shall make a good faith effort to ensure equal representation of all wards by making nomination from their respective wards whenever possible, but in no case shall appointments be made from outside the jurisdictional limits of the City of Albany. Unless otherwise prescribed by statute or to fulfill requirements for a certain number of appointees from a particular ward, the mayor's appointments shall be at large."
That isn't the situation that I'm addressing.
Yeah. Well, it's covered. Make nomination from their respective wards whenever possible.
Whenever possible.
Okay.
So you, it was not possible, so.
We're good.
So anyway, yeah, through one. Okay. We'll address it next time.
Yes.
Sorry, real fast. That is true for most of the CAGs. In that resolution that was passed, there was a specific paragraph about the planning commission. This is the only commission that is your ward. All the others are whenever possible. So that's where this is coming in, why it's an odd duck situation, I call it.
So I'm asking for special dispensation for my appointee then.
So we'll address it.
And that's even called out in bold type.
Thank you.
So.
You good, councillor? Perfect. So I have a few things. Outside agency appointments, I'll be making changes to those, and so I'll be working with each of the councillors, including the ones, I'll do Zoom meetings with you guys as well. So that's coming. Some, a lot of terms expire, so I'm moving people around to get more experience in other areas and other disciplines. So expect an email from me to set up a time to talk. It's my time. So next on the agenda, next thing I have is, if I were mayor contest has been launched. So if you know a high school kid, a young person, a middle schooler and/or a elementary person, fourth and fifth grade, that would like to participate in the contest, these are available online. They're also around different places in the city, but last year's turnout was fantastic. We'd like to have more kids participate, and I will be asking members of the community to help me judge the posters and read essays and judge the presentations by the high school people. And then, what else I want to talk about today? And it was an honor to be square and those police officers, fire personnel today, and I'm happy to have three new city councillors on the daisies today for full meeting, and so I appreciate your service to the city and what you pledge to do. And I think I'm done. I have councillor Novak, go ahead. You're muted.
I believe you missed councillor McGee, unless she said something, and I, I believe you overlooked her, sir.
Yes, you're right, you're right. Thank you so much, councillor.
Thank you, sis, having my back and leaving me out here.
You bet.
I'm feeling like a skeleton.
That was not intentional. I've done the other folks too.
I do have a little business.
Not on your first meeting, not hanging you out to dry on the first meeting.
Thank you. Somebody is looking out for me. Alex, I thought we were better than that. I have a little business. I'm going to go see a constituent on the Chicago Avenue Street regarding his storm drains. Apparently, he's been going through this since the 1960s, and he made that very clear, and I'm going to walk over there tomorrow and talk with him and see what we can do about that, which we're probably going to be doing what we've been doing for him, but it'd be nice to see the issue up close and personal. So that's all I got. Thank you, councillor Novak.
And I do apologize to my esteemed councillor, my colleague. I'll turn toward to the city manager now.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The first thing on my list, we've already pretty much addressed, and that was the citizen advisory group appointments. Thank you for all of your efforts to find good candidates for our CAGs as well. Thank you for all of your efforts to find good candidates for our CAGs, as we call them, and then, as I mentioned, on the 30th, we'll take the next round. The second thing is, you all know that the League of Oregon Cities has City Day in Salem, and that's coming up on the 25th of this month. It's an opportunity to get up there and to hear from the League's representatives and lobbyists, and also to hear from members of the legislature. But as the League would point out, perhaps the most important aspect of the visit is the opportunity to make personal visits to our legislators. So, Matt Harrington is coordinating our visits for us. I've sent you an email asking for those who are interested in attending, so I've heard back from a few of you, but you'll understand that the visits to these legislators' offices, these are small offices, if you've ever been in the Capitol. So, I really need to know who's going to come ahead of time. So, we need to know. So, please let me know if you'd like to join that trip. It's an all-day trip, so it's an investment, and it comes the day after we have our two meetings, Monday and Tuesday, the 23rd and the 24th, our longer meetings. If you can't make it, please don't worry about it. We will be represented there. And the last thing I have, I want to close us on this good note. I received an email. You all know who Carrie Shepherd is. Those of you who are new, Carrie was, is our counsel in our litigation, chief counsel with, for our litigation with CH2M Hill, but he has been ably assisted by several other attorneys, one of whom is Jim Kincaid from the firm Cable Houston. And Jim retired at the end of last year, December 31st, and he sent me this very nice New Year's greetings, and I'll read, if you'll indulge me, I'll read from this, an excerpt from it. "I must say, the few city council meetings that I joined the past year have made a big impression on me. Your city is special. You may not see that being on the front line, but it is. Veterans Day celebrations and all of the other things the city does are heartwarming. I want to make a special note about Chris and Kristen." That's Chris Bailey. And Kristen, you know, from our superintendent. "I hope the city," and he says parenthetically, "I'm sure you do," "know how amazing they are. For 35 years, I've worked with folks and really, seriously, never worked with more dedicated, smart, and honest people in my career. They truly represent the city as best as or better than anyone else could. Now that I'm retired, I feel like I can express these sentiments, and it's important to let you know from my outside world perspective, they're fantastic. Take care. It's been great working with you, Mark Jaeger, Chris, Kristen, and everyone else at the City of Albany. Jim Kincaid." So, I did want to bring that to you because, as he says, I already know that about Kristen and Chris, and I think, I suspect you do too.
Oh, yeah.
But it's worth reading. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
So, I have one thing. I saw somebody walk in earlier, Andrea Andrews from Cookie Plug, and so, after the meeting, introduce yourself. And so, next meetings, there's a lot of them coming up, so please take your notepads out. January 23rd, 2023 at 3:00 PM, there's a special session. Is that our education, the budget stuff? Yeah. And on the 24th through 3:00 PM, the same thing the next day. On the 30th is a 4:00 PM work session. January 30th is a joint work session at 5:30 with the Planning Department, Planning Commission, and in February 1st is our, a 12:00 PM joint meeting with the Lynn County Board of Commissioners on February 1st. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming this evening. Good night, ladies. Good night, councillors.